I'm gonna call the or-
Turn my mic on. Call the order, the January 24th, 2019 business meeting, and ask the county administrator, please take the roll.
Good morning, commissioners. We have Mr. Stephen Mancor here as your county council. And serving as your clerk to the board today is Mr. Kevin Moss. So I'll start the roll with Commissioner Humberston. Here, Commissioner Fisher.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Commissioner Savas is volunteering today on the homeless count and will not be in attendance. So please join me in pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Don, what's up first?
Okay, we do have a presentation this morning. We're gonna hear about Carley Creek, the project, water quality project for Carley Creek. I'm going to invite Mr. Juan Ruinga with Water Environment Services on up to present this to you. So also, we have Mr. Greg Geist, the Director of Water Environment Services.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Ron Ruinga with Water Environment Services. And we're really happy to be here today to talk to you about our Carley Creek water quality project. I'm gonna give you a brief status update, and then we're gonna show a video that we put together about the project. First, I have about five minutes, and I have a four-and-a-half-minute video, so I'm gonna be as quick as I possibly can. But I wanted to start by saying thank you to the board for your continued support throughout this project. This project's been in the works for over five years, and the board has been very supportive all along the way. And we very much appreciate that. Also, Portland General Electric is a partner that's helped fund part of the project, so we want to thank them. And then also, our staff, our dedicated staff are the reason that this project is, has happened and turned out as great as it did. The status update on the project, we have basically reached substantial completion of construction. We have some more plants to put in the ground over the next couple of months, but the good news is, is the facility's online. It is now treating runoff from the developed areas in the Clackamas Industrial Area and is improving water quality and habitat, both in Carley Creek and in the Clackamas River. So our vision has come to life. I would also like to let you know about and invite you to an event on March 22nd, where we're gonna have an opening and a ceremony of the completion of the project the morning of March 22nd. And the board is invited to that along with our performance partners. And I think you'll hear more about that in the future. You'll get the invite. And with that, unless Greg has, do you have anything?
I was just gonna say, March 22nd corresponds with World Water Day. And we're hoping that by doing it that day, we might get some media attention and some folks out on the site. And we're looking forward to having as many of you folks there as possible and celebrating this achievement.
Thank you.
Great. With Mr. Moss's help, we'll roll the video. March 22nd.
The Carley Creek Project is a 15-acre patch of land in unincorporated Clackamas County, wedged between industrial properties and the Clackamas River. Named after the family that once owned and farmed the land for generations, Carley Creek is a repository for much of the stormwater runoff that drains from the surrounding area. Very little of the runoff was treated to remove pollutants before it made its way into the Clackamas River, where nearly 400,000 people get their drinking water. In 2014, water quality monitoring of Carley Creek found high levels of copper, zinc, and lead that far exceeded pollution standards. Water Environment Services recognized how important this property was to water quality and acquired the land from the Carley family to establish a water quality facility using floodplain enhancements to naturally filter out pollutants before they reach the Clackamas River.
This particular location, most of this area, was developed before Wes was a district and before a lot of those standards were in place to treat the stormwater. And that's why this is a particularly good opportunity for us to retrofit the whole area. The stormwater runoff that comes to this particular location is, has lots of heavy metals, E. coli, primarily because it's industrial, commercial areas that drain to this site. So the first priority was to reroute the stormwater from where it currently discharges into Carley Creek. So we had to install some new stormwater pipes to get the water to flow into this location. It discharges at an outfall, and it goes through a series of step pools. And after the step pools, it enters the first detention cell. And that's where we're hoping to capture and treat the majority of the stormwater.
Now, the Carley property is able to significantly reduce surface water pollutants that makes its way into the watershed. In addition to reducing pollutants, the project enhances the environment for wildlife. Wes installed large wood habitat structures to give the aquatic species a home and refuge from thermal pollution. Invasive plants were removed, and thousands of native species were installed, which contributes to a healthy and balanced environment for all the wildlife that reside there.
The large woody debris in the stream does a few things. One of the things it does is breaks up the flow. So when the water's rushing down in a big storm and it hits the logs, it slows down. So that's a big thing because it allows the fish to have a place to rest. The combination of plants and soils here is really special for treating stormwater. The plants and the soils act together to remove the pollutants from the water. So the first way that pollutants are removed are just the physical process of being able to settle out of the water. We have installed over 50,000 emergent wetland plants right now. The invasive species were removed because otherwise, they would take over the site. The native species will provide better food and habitat for the native wildlife. Then, as the water moves on, many different reactions are facilitated by bacteria and fungi that are in the soil associated with the plant roots, too. And voila, they're removed from the stormwater, and we can have clean water going out of the site.
The result of this project is a cleaner Clackamas River, a more efficient stormwater management system, and an enhanced environment for wildlife. More than anything, the Carley Creek Project is living proof that the balance between nature and industry can be achieved.
Well, it's a great project. I'm glad it's coming near completion and look forward to seeing it in a few years when a lot of those plants have grown. So the Carley family owned that and sold it to the county a number of years ago. 2017?
Around 2011, 2012 timeframe. But yeah, they sold it to Wes.
And they farmed it?
Yeah, previously, it had been in agriculture for quite some time.
Great. Any questions or comments?
That's beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. So the next is Citizen Communication. And we have Mark Struloff and Lorraine Hubbard. Just give your name and general location where you live.
Okay, my name is Lorraine Hubbard, and I live in the Karis area. Been a native Oregonian my whole life. Had a business, I've met several of you. I had a business in Milwaukee called The Brochi House that I ran for, my mom and I ran for 25 years. But the reason I'm here today is because I'm concerned about all the marijuana growing operations in our area in rural Clackamas County. Recently, I just found out about an operation on Spangler Road that's very close to our place. And I didn't get a notice. Number one, I think you should up the, to tell, I guess you just tell about the bordering properties, but I think you should expand that to at least, you know, because it affects so many people within the area. So anyway, that's my concern. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Ken?
I just wanted to respond to her concern about the distances for location. I've had this conversation with some people over the last couple of weeks. And I've asked staff to take a look at how we might be able to expand the notification distances in the rural areas. Because you could have 25 acres and 300 feet or 700 feet from that's just the next-door neighbor. And yet, it could be something that impacts everybody else in a much larger area. So staff is looking at that, and hopefully, we'll be able to make a change in that.
Great. Yes. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Mark Struloff, and I'm a registered voter in Oregon City. Actually, Lorraine's my sister. I'm third generation on our family farm in the Karis Beaver Creek area. I'm 65 years old, and this is the first time I've ever come before the board. And I'm a lifelong. I was born on Washington Street in the old Oregon City Hospital. So first time I've ever come before the board. So I guess I've been fairly happy with our state and city government over the last 65 years. But this marijuana issue has impacted us in, I feel, in a negative way. The meeting last week, I hold no animosity or anything against the people that are for marijuana or the ZDO 270, or against ZDO 271. We've all have our interests, and I want the best for everyone. That's why I'm here. So again, I'm here today, again today, to rule in favor that I'm asking you and imploring you to vote in favor of ZDO 271, which would limit the number of marijuana licenses to one per tract of land. I'm referring to a specific property that my sister just referred to, 15171 South Spangler Road, which would affect our farm environment. And I'm just not looking at it from me only. I'm looking at it from a lifetime of living in this community and out in the rural area and seeing what is going on. I'm new to this. I've, as I stated last week, I've been against marijuana my whole life, and I have a personal issue that I shared. A very close family member has been addicted to marijuana for 25 years. And she's unable to work, unable to function. So it has devastated her life and our lives as a family. So to speed this up, I know I've got 20 seconds or whatever. As I drive down 7th Street and see pot shop after pot shop, which it's referred to now as dope slope, that is, that's a sad, sad scenario that when I traveled to Nebraska to see my wife's family, I brag about Oregon all the way. I love Oregon and Oregon City, the end of the Oregon Trail. And now, we're turning into a marijuana production capital of the country, I guess. And I think it's going to be, I know it's gonna be a negative impact on our community, on our citizens, and on our, on our environment as far as attracting new people and tourism. You know, with the new mill site, the mill site being renovated, Oregon City's gonna be reborn. This is not the reborn that we want.
Oh, you don't have to worry about it, unless all these people want to testify. A couple of minutes is gonna hurt.
So again, my hope and prayer is that we do what is best for our children, grandchildren, and community according to God's will, as revealed through His written word. Thank you for your time. I ask you to vote in favor of ZDO 271.
I don't think that the recommendation, though, was to do per tract. It was, it was by-
My, whatever to limit as much as possible, however that works out in the wording. You know where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Arlene Cantor and Gretchen Groves. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you for having us.
Commissioners, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about tobacco retail licensing in Clackamas County. My name is Arlene Cantor. I'm a resident of Clackamas County. I'm also a cancer epidemiologist and a volunteer member of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm here today to support the county's interest in a countywide tobacco retail license program. It's a powerful way to monitor retailers' compliance with laws and to enforce penalties for illegal sale of tobacco to young people. We've made vital progress toward preventing and reducing smoking in our youngest Oregonians by raising the age for the sale of tobacco products to 21. Now, we can support and strengthen this effort by monitoring and enforcing compliance through a countywide tobacco retail license program that provides retailer education and consequences for illegal sale to underage individuals. For our new Tobacco 21 law to be effective, the age limit for access must be rigorously enforced. If we don't, then our young people will readily identify the retailers who would sell to them. The Oregon Health Authority's most recent inspection revealed that 14% of tobacco retailers in Clackamas County sold tobacco products to underage individuals. The Oregon Health Authority is only able to inspect about 30% of tobacco outlets annually. But the Clackamas County Tobacco Retail Licensing Program would identify and visit every tobacco retailer in our county and twice a year. This would strongly reinforce the Tobacco 21 law as well as establish important relationships with retailers. And it will be especially significant where the tobacco retailers are located, near schools. And California's experience with communities that have adopted strong local tobacco retailer licensing ordinances has overwhelmingly demonstrated that these programs are successful. A countywide tobacco retail license program here in Clackamas will be an effective mechanism to strengthen our efforts to prevent and reduce smoking with a positive impact on public health, and it will save lives. Preventing our vulnerable young people from becoming smokers is one of our most important goals in eliminating addiction to tobacco and nicotine. This is a key health priority. So thank you for your interest in moving forward with this vital effort for a comprehensive countywide tobacco retail license program.
Great. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Commissioners, good morning. My name is Gretchen Groves, and I am a resident of Clackamas County. I am here this morning to provide a comment also about this tobacco. I am a mother of two young boys, Cooper and Crosby, and I'm also a member of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm here this morning to voice my support for Clackamas County pursuing a tobacco retail license ordinance. Tobacco is the number-one cause of preventable death in Oregon and across our county, country. If used as directed, tobacco will almost certainly kill. With current tobacco smokers dying every day, big tobacco's business model depends on addicting today's youth to be tomorrow's smoker. Obviously, a problem for a mother. 90% of lifetime smokers begin their addiction before age 21. Evidence proves one of the best ways to keep tobacco products out of hands of young people is a robust tobacco retail license to ensure retailers play by the rules. Our state requires retailers to obtain a license before selling products deemed to be potentially dangerous, items like cannabis, alcohol, and firearms. Yet, retailers of tobacco products are not required to secure a license before selling the deadly product. When it comes to underage sales of tobacco, sales to minors, Oregon ranks among the highest. In Clackamas County, the issue is much more serious. According to the 2017 Healthy Teen Survey, 11th graders in Clackamas County use tobacco products at twice the rate of their peers statewide. Tobacco addiction is a big problem, and big problems require bold solutions. As a mother of two young boys, I urge you to vote yes on the resolution to pursue a tobacco retail license ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming today. Thank you. Thank you. And this is the biggest audience we've ever had. These, if the camera looks that way, are some of the great employees that we have at Clackamas County. I appreciate you coming today and want you to know that we value all of you. I've never worked a place where people really love what they do and care so much about the county that they work for. So I just want you to know that we value you highly, and I hope we can get past this union bargaining agreement as soon as possible. So I have Bob Escudero and also Les Poole.
Good morning, commissioners. Happy to be here today. You're being forwarded a letter that I released to, to the board earlier this morning. I'll go ahead and move on right now to keep them, a lot of time. Commissioners, I present this letter on behalf of the members of the Clackamas County Employees Association, the CCEA. We appreciate the opportunity to respond to the letter sent to our members by Commissioner Bernard. The CCEA is the largest labor association in the county. We have approximately 900 members spread across the county. We work in many capacities, from medical assistants to nurse practitioners to counselors, to maintenance workers, to community corrections officers. With our fellow employees, both represented and nonrepresented, we keep the county up and running. And we hope the commissioners appreciate the work we do. And I've heard from you do, so you do appreciate this. So thank you very much. After almost one year of bargaining with county management, however, we do not feel appreciated. While we are close to a new agreement, the county management seems intent on not arriving at one. Evidently, there is confusion and misinformation about the nature of the present stalemate over the COLA. A COLA is intended to do no more than attempt to keep wages up with inflation. Historically, our members have received the same COLA that has been received by nonrepresented employees. No more, no less. Please see the, please see the attached chart, which was received by the county during bargaining. This chart shows that for the last 12 years, nonrepresented and represented EA members have received the same COLA. Our members deserve the same COLA that the commissioners and every nonrepresented employee receives. That goes for this fiscal year and for the next two fiscal years of the proposed contract. We have emphasized to the county negotiating team that the EA is willing to sign an agreement that ensures that EA members receive no more or no less than what other groups in the county receive for a COLA. A gallon of gas, a loaf of bread, everything. It all costs the same, whether an employee is represented by a union or not. This, the plain fact is, the county can have that agreement immediately if it wants it. This should not be controversial. The county should not be trying to drive a wedge between nonrepresented and represented employees when it comes to the matter of a COLA. The board also appears to be misinformed about the written reprimands. Every labor group in the county currently has the right to grieve and arbitrate written reprimands. That includes all three ASME bargaining units, plus FAPO and the POA. This right is important because a written reprimand is often the first step in the disciplinary process and progressive discipline, which is part of county code. We are unwilling to give up this right, which has been part of EA contracts for as long as anyone remembers. For some inexplicable reason, the county management has singled out the EA and picked this bargaining cycle to try to remove this right from the EA contracts. We don't understand this offensive bargaining tactic if, as the county managers say, they are sincerely interested in a new agreement. It has been disappointing for EA members to see the commissioners, a number of whom have stated their support for labor and equity, endorsed management's proposals to treat represented employees different on the COLA and tried to undermine the EA's ability to represent its members. However, we are close to an agreement. The EA is ready to resume bargaining and, as indicated, move towards an agreement quickly. Thank you very much for your time and listening.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming today.
Good morning. I'm Les Poole. I live in Gladstone. I'm here almost every week. Good to see folks here, no matter where you are on an issue. One thing I wanted to talk about today was evening meetings, something that I worked real hard to establish and I think go a long ways. And I recall, and I've mentioned this before, how evening meetings, one evening meeting a month to provide more access, whether it was for these people or whoever it may be, really, really makes a difference. And right now, we're having one per quarter. And I will be, I will be pulling real hard to see evening meetings once a month in the future. I've been collecting signatures. I've got 146. I haven't tried real hard. But I think as a chief petitioner on the tolling measure, while I'm out trying to gather 140,000, I can probably pick up a few more folks that would endorse having evening meetings here in the future. So I do appreciate that we have them once per quarter and would really encourage the commission to, to look towards having one a month like we had in the past. I'm going to Salem today. I'll wrap up by just sharing that I'm going to Salem today. I'm not quite sure why I'm going, but I'm going. And I encourage folks to pay attention to what's going on. It's, there's a pattern here in Oregon where we have millions of dollars spent on campaigns. We saw that with the governor's race. And when it was all done afterwards, then we're heading into a legislative session. So certainly, at that time, bills are introduced, things come out. But this year's been extremely troubling. It really has been. If you look at some of the news and reports and ideas and, and activity that's gone on since the election leading into this legislative session, if you were someone who's looking at it from the outside, like I am, you'd be really troubled. Really troubled. So you're getting some strong messages. And I think the big message is everybody's concerned about the economy. We're concerned about the cost of living. All of us could use the cost of living raise given the way rents and, and the cost to, to own or purchase a home, the way that's going through the roof. And I don't come to you expecting you to remedy that. I certainly hope that in the future, there's more effort to manage the growth boundary in a different way and do some things to help relieve the land shortage, in a different way and do some things to help relieve the land shortage, do some things to, you know, help deal with the high cost of housing. But by no stretch do I or should anyone think that the county commission is supposed to cure that. That's a tough one. Well, I appreciate your time as always, and wish me luck in Salem. I'll report back next week.
Good luck in Salem. Yeah, good luck. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. So we have a bargaining session scheduled for...
February the 5th.
February.
February the 5th with EA.
February 5th with EA. Okay, thanks. The next item is the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have approval to apply for a continuation grant from Oregon Department of Transportation, 5310 Enhanced Mobility Funds through Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, TRMET, for preventative maintenance, bus purchase, and operation funding for Mount Hood Express, transportation-reaching people, and transportation services to Boring. Approval of Amendment Number 15 for an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for operation as a local public health authority for Clackamas County. Approval of a professional services contract with cascaded behavioral healthcare to provide peer support services. Approval of professional technical and personal services contract with Mental Health Association of Oregon for peer support services for opioid overdose survivors. Approval of a professional services contract with Oregon Family Support Network for peer delivered services for families in crisis in emergency departments. Approval of professional services contract with the Living Room for Youth, Young Adult Peer Support Services. Under our Department of Transportation Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Canby to transfer permitting, authority, and maintenance responsibility for a portion of township road, County Road Number 47, DTD Number 31021, to the City of Canby. Approval of a board order adopting the vacation of a portion of Nixon Avenue. Approval of a board order adopting the vacation of a non-maintained local access road. Approval of a supplemental project agreement Number 32756 with Oregon Department of Transportation for the South Ivy Street Canby Project. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Canby related to the South Ivy Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. Approval of a contract with Bell and Associates, Inc. to provide solid waste annual financial review services. Under our Technology Services, approval of a service level agreement, Amendment Number One, between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and the City of Wilsonville for exchanging dark fiber connections. Under your Board of Health, approval of a resolution supporting a Clackamas County countywide tobacco retail license. And under your Development Agency, approval of the Second Amendment to Disposition Agreement with Bottling Group LLC. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Does any member of the Commission want to remove Paul and I from the consent agenda?
No.
I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I just want to add something. In there is the comment, is moving forward on the retail licensing, all it's doing is doing, moving forward on the discussion of the retail licensing, not adopting it. So just wanted to be clear on that. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. County Administrator update.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple of items to share with you this morning. First, for the second consecutive year in a row, our Water and Environment Services Department has earned the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And in order to receive this, the West budget had to meet nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation program criteria as a policy document and also as a financial plan. And also, it serves as a storytelling document as well. And I just wanted to acknowledge the commitment our West staff have given to excellence in budgeting here in Clackamas County, and I want to congratulate them for the award. Then I also had information from a local constituent regarding our staff in the Code Enforcement Division in Transportation and Development. A Beaver Creek resident recently came into our office to tell us that he had received excellent service regarding a construction project on his home. He said that several staff members went out of their way to assist him, and he was able to get everything done before a violation would take place. The permit staff, plans examiners, inspectors, and others worked with this individual to remedy the issue, and he found that the staff were exceptional to work with, and he just wanted to make sure that they get noticed for going above and beyond in their duty. So congratulations again to our outstanding code enforcement staff for the fine work that they do. I have one other information, a piece of information I need to share with you, and that is next week, January 31st, the business meeting will be an evening meeting. It will convene at 6:00 PM here in your board hearing room.
Your last day is a night meeting?
That's true.
We're gonna go to midnight.
So it's a fitting, you know, my first evening meeting with the Board of County Commissioners was an evening meeting.
Oh, really?
So that was my last one. I did want to, you have this little button I've been, I put on this morning. This came to me this morning from a former Thurston County Commissioner Sandra Romero, who learned that I was going to be retiring, and so she sent me a very nice card with a number of jokes about retirement. But this says, it's got a little picture of a donkey on here, and it says, "I am a badass." So I'll have to send her a thank you note. It's nice, nice to receive something. I haven't seen her in five and a half years, so it's very nice to hear from her, so.
I think she's in one of those videos, isn't she?
She is.
Yes, I remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ken?
I just wanted to ask you, do you have some time right after this meeting? I'm looking at two pieces of paper, one from the union and another piece of paper we got from the office, and there's some numbers that don't make sense to me that seem to be inconsistent, and I'd like to sit down with you afterwards.
Sure, we can find some time. We've got a strategy meeting immediately after, after the board meeting.
When you're done with that, if that would be okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if we have an intention on Tuesday of having an executive session and discussing, you know, what we received today, and I think if we haven't, we should. Okay? So we'll put it on the executive session on Tuesday. Okay? Up first, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Thank you. I've been spending a lot of time focusing on housing and homelessness, participated in the homeless count yesterday at Father's Heart. If you haven't ever done the homeless count, I really encourage you to do that. It's happening this week, and there are still slots that need to be filled, so I put that message out to my fellow Commissioners. It's well structured, and you sit down, you talk with people who are homeless, you ask them a series of questions, and it's very, very important to get the accurate numbers as to not only how many people we have that are homeless in our community, but what are the underlying reasons, and where are they sleeping at night, and why are they homeless? So it's a lot of information gathering, and during this process, I've been gathering more than one new friend through my conversations, of which I will be continuing to share stories and advocate for these folks as we, as we go along. I want to put a shout out to our county administrator and to our staff at Clackamas County. We all know that the federal government is shut down. We are going through a process of connecting with our department managers to see how this depart, how this shutdown, federal shutdown, would affect our operations locally, and we are working very hard to try to get ahead and develop a contingency plan. I feel really comfortable with our processes and our commitment to being prepared for the possible discontinuation of federal dollars. We went through the consent agenda today, and there's all these contracts that we approve in the consent agenda. Well, what we often don't think about is that the services that we provide at the local level are often intergovernmental, from federal dollars to state dollars to, to our local dollars and to our local programs that we provide. Tomorrow is a community leader meeting with Congressman Schrader. I don't know if my other Commissioners are planning to attend that meeting, but I will be there and are armed with information to let him know what this impact will mean locally. One concern that we, a very serious concern we have is we have housing, Section 8 housing vouchers. I believe we have 600 people that if we do not receive the federal funds, could face eviction because we would not have the money to provide those housing vouchers if this shutdown continues in a prolonged manner. Really hoping that our leaders at the federal level can figure out a resolution very, very fast to open the government and keep us functioning. So that's what I have for today.
Great, thank you. And let me see, Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, well, thank you, Commissioner Fisher. I know we've been watching this shutdown, and I know both of you and I have had conversations with Rich Swiff, Director of our Human Resources, about what the long-term consequences could be, because we'll, the potential of losing ground and not regaining it is a real serious one. So thank you for kind of mentioning that. In terms of housing, we basically, last night, had our IMPAC Work Plan, Metropolitan Policy Advisory Committee on Land Use. We are looking at housing bond implementation issues, so we'll be advising the Metro Council on that. We're going to be doing a refresh of the 2040 Plan, which will be quite the undertaking. I think that's going to be the big lift this year. We'll be taking a look at employment land studies, and we'll actually be looking at data sets. One of the suggestions was to look at various sets of data of how we do our projections for employment lands, for expanding the UGB, and look at different sets to see where the underlying assumptions differ, because oftentimes we get different numbers. So we're actually talking about being more data-driven and trying to figure out, okay, why does one report from, for example, the home builders say something different than what we might be getting from Metro staff? And it really has to do with underlying assumptions. So we're actually going to take a deep dive into that. It's kind of nerdy, but I think that it will help us cooperate with one another and really come up with good solutions if we can really get some clarity into, into where we're heading together. It will not be at Congressman Schrader's meeting, because I'm meeting with the governor tomorrow, actually. I'm meeting with the governor tomorrow.
Who's the governor?
Governor Kate Brown, yeah. Who's the governor? Okay, good for you. Okay. Anyway, what we'll be talking about is the Willamette Falls locks. We are becoming very, very close to, as we say, unlocking the locks, and we're talking to her tomorrow about the process and whether or not we can see about having one of the agencies actually take over the auspice of that. So that's going to be tomorrow, and I'll be traveling to Salem to talk about the locks with, actually, President of the Senate, Peter Courtney, and I'll probably be also working with my Association of Oregon County staff, you know, to do a touch back about what we are going to be doing with housing as an association during this legislative session. Also, I did the homeless count at our father's house yesterday. I think I've done it every, every year since I've been a Commissioner, so I think that it gives us important information that helps us get housing and human development dollars from the federal level. And let's hope that the shutdown stops soon, because the consequence is, some of us aren't feeling it yet, but we will be feeling it soon, and it will have dire consequences across the, not only Clackamas County, but the country. So that's it. All right, oh, I've got arts and culture activities in the county. All righty, we've got the Milwaukee Poetry Series presents tribute reading to Gail Barker special event, Saturday, January 26, 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the LeDding Library Pond House in Milwaukee. This reading is to pay tribute to Gail Barker, a local poet and a member of the Milwaukee Poetry Series Committee, who passed away October 18th after a battle with cancer. It'll be hosted by Kate Bramer, Gail's daughter, and Tom Hogan. The featured readers will be Greg Chamoff, Dan Hobbs, Tony Fansdale, Ron Rash, and Emmett Wheatfall. They will be reading some of Gail's work as well as their own. The Mount Hood Museum Social History Happy Hour is also this Saturday from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at the Mount Hood Museum and Cultural Center Government Camp. Flying Buses and Other Oddities presented by Lloyd Musser. Join the Mount Hood Museum curator Lloyd Musser for a fun social history happy hour presentation featuring the flying bus and other oddities that lurk in the history of Mount Hood. I think they used to have a bus that was on a tram that they, doesn't sound, doesn't sound real safe.
It looked a little scary.
It was a little scary, but part of our, part of our wacky history here in Clackamas County, right? Also, Lakewood Theater is actually in the middle of Dial M for Murder through February 10th. I also attended with Clackamas Repertory Theater. We had our retreat on Sunday, and we're working on the next season for the Clackamas Repertory Theater. So, thanks. Arts and Culture.
Great, Commissioner Humberton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Close.
I am getting gun shy now.
Humbert Stun.
Humbert.
Humbert Stun.
That's what I said.
No, you did it. Try it again. Try it again, Jim.
Humbert Stun.
Humbert Stun.
Humbert Stone.
Humbert Stone.
Come try that.
Humbert Stone.
Isn't it Humbert Stun?
That was the original name.
But now it's Humbert Stun.
Humbert Stun.
Because you're stunning.
Oh, God.
Humbert Stun.
Don't worry about it.
All right, go.
Just get a stun gun.
It's okay. For those who may not be aware, we have made an appointment for a new general manager for Clackamas County, and it is Gary Schmidt. So just, for those that may not have heard the word, I wanted to make sure we got that out there. I'll be doing the homeless count this afternoon. Been scheduled for that. Looking forward to that. It'll be an interesting learning experience, I think. I met with the Fair Board the other day. I want to say thank you to the Tourism Board, who granted the Fair Board a $40,000 grant to help with their master plan. They are moving forward on that. They're also moving forward on the audit that we requested as part of the master agreement that we have with them. So I can tell you that the Fair Board is very much acting in good faith to, to work together with the county. They also very much appreciated the assistance they got during the fair last year with an electrician onboard the entire time that the fair was going, so that all of the electrical problems were able to be taken care of. I went to the state of the county, excuse me, state of the college event at Harmony Campus. I have to tell you that the investment that we made as citizens in that college was well worth it. Just as one example, the nursing program has been expanded, and the entire class this year passed their finals, 100%. Given the importance and the necessity of more nurses in our healthcare system, that's a real plus for us locally. Commissioner Bernard and I went to Rododendron for the Rododendron CPO meeting, and the community seemed to be pleased to see us out there, paying attention to issues that are important to them in the rural area. Commissioner Fisher and I hosted Senator Wyden's Town Hall. He definitely had a number of questions asked that put him on the spot, but for the most part, I thought he represented the issues that are important to Clackamas County pretty well. Monday was Martin Luther King Day, and I was invited to participate in some of the celebrations at, at the Neighborhood Community Church on Gleason. I want to say thank you to Emmett Wheatfall, who was there and helped squier me around a little bit and introduced me to folks at, at that celebration. Last night, actually several nights, we've been attending the NCPRD community meetings, where people are learning about the issues that have to do with our park system and the disagreement we've had with Happy Valley and how we're trying to work that out. And last night, I went to the Beaver Creek CPO, where a presentation by the city staff from Clackamas, excuse me, from Oregon City, was made to the community regarding the Beaver Creek Planning Group in the area that they have annexed into, into Oregon City on Beaver Creek Road, and that's all I have.
Dog.
The dog.
The dog.
I can't remember the dog. You can't pronounce my name. I think we're gonna be fine. Thank you. This is Petey. He's an extremely energetic puppy who is looking for an owner who wants to play, play, play. He's a 15-week-old Mailboxer mix, and his breed is known for being an energetic one, so please know he will always want to exercise and run. He would do best in a home with children who are at least nine years old. If he sounds like the friends you've been looking for, please go and visit him today. For more information about Petey or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
Great, thank you. One thing Gary Schmidt was announced as the new administrator will be starting February 23rd, so keep a list of the things you need to talk to him about, everybody, all citizens, and we'll...
Don't terrorize the new administrator.
You're gonna bury him.
The Rododendron CPO, probably one of the best things, was a film that they found under somebody's bed of the '64 flood up in Government Camp, the Sandy River. It was great. I'd never seen it before, and I don't know when they found it, but fairly recently, I hadn't seen it. Last, I was just gonna say that we had two NCPR meetings, so two nights, two days, I worked 13 hours. When I got home, the dogs beat up on me. Beaver Creek, why did I want to, oh, I wondered, Don, another thing, you know, if a development does occur along Beaver Creek, can the county demand intersection improvements or road improvements? You know, when we... Or road improvements? You know, when we, I, I don't know if, if, can the county demand a light, for example? We have Clackamas Community College, Clackamas High School there, I mean, not Clackamas High School, Oregon City High School. Can the county demand intersection improvements?
You were talking about a development within the City of Oregon City that the City of Oregon City is processing in accordance with its land use requirements? Is that what you're suggesting?
I, but there are roads, and they are going to impact our roads. And, I don't know, I, I just thought that, is that something we can demand?
Yeah, so I, I think that would depend upon what, if, if the development itself is in the city limits of the City of Oregon City, it would depend upon what those regulations require of that development. Certainly, we would have an opportunity to express an influence that, that outcome. If we felt that there was justification for a particular kind of improvement, we certainly would and do weigh in on developments that occur within cities across the county. But I'd need to get something a little more specific and be more accurate in my answer to you about that.
Yeah, but, so Oregon City gave a presentation. It might be helpful not to have them present to us, but actually, it wouldn't be a bad idea. Or Oregon City Business Alliance, have they had a presentation?
I think one of the things I would want to encourage, and maybe it's happening, I don't know for sure, but our traffic people probably need to have a conversation with Oregon City as far as what can be done on Beaver Creek Road, because if, if and when that development goes in, it's going to impact what is essentially a two-lane road. And right now, when high school lets out, the traffic can back up for quite a ways, because people are on both sides of the road, wanting to pick up their kids from school. The, the speed limit slows down dramatically, for good reason. I mean, it should. And I know that the, the rural community of Beaver Creek, they have some serious concerns about that transportation issue. If there's some way we can help ameliorate that, I think that's something we ought to take a look at.
Yeah, if I could get the specific informations about the development in question, I will make sure that that gets forwarded onto our, our staff, and I'm all but certain that they're probably already in communication with the city staff on, on the projects.
Okay.
Do we have another Canby Ferry meeting, community meeting? Do you know?
I think so.
I thought there might be another one.
I think there's one.
Well, as soon as that, we have that meeting, I'd like to bring that back for a, a discussion at a work session, because I think we should seriously consider removing the bridge from consideration. My understanding is that there was no support for a bridge. We do need to figure out, however, what to do with the ferry.
Yes, so I've got text messages from Dan, and it looks like Kevin was going to bring this up. So, we do have a Canby study session scheduled in about a week or so.
Okay, good.
I also got a note from Dan, and this tells you they're listening closely as your board meeting is underway.
Wow.
That, yes, absolutely, if we believe a development impacts our roads, we do communicate with the city involved, and that the cities typically will ask for our comments, and if we're able to demonstrate that the particular development would trip a measurable capacity issue of some kind, then yes, we've got some traction with respect to what we can require. So, but there's got to be kind of substantive measurement of what the actual impact may be. And, and of course, you know, we have different standards with county roads than the city standards, and it's an important distinction, so.
So, I'll give it to you in a second. I, I'd love to get count information on the Canby Ferry, cost, annual cost. If we don't open the, since he's listening, if we don't open the, the locks, what are alternatives for maintenance of that ferry? And I heard there were some fairly good ideas from the community, how we should, we could pay for that.
Yes.
I also think we need to talk about the tourism aspect of the ferry. I mean, my brother came from Nantucket, never been on the ferry. He was just really, loved it, as short a ride as it is. And so, I guess, I mean, there's a lot of great stuff to talk about on that.
Again, I've got a wonderful note from Dan that I'm just going to share with you verbatim.
I'd like the fact he's listening.
Yeah, he says that January thirtieth is the Canby meeting, that's, so that's next week, and it's informational, and yes, we will provide to you cost and options. And by the way, you guys look great. Yeah, and he, he also acknowledged that we, we heard some great ideas and options from the community at the, at the community meeting, so, good.
Yeah, all right, Ken.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, just briefly, on the, on the, on the issue of Beaver Creek Road, I, I, we've worked very hard to, to try and, and have a positive working relationship with our cities, including and especially Oregon City. And I don't want to, to, to be heavy-handed in how we approach this, and I'm not suggesting that, that staff would be, so if Dan sends you a note, I hope I've addressed that already. But I'd like to do it as, as, as cooperatively as we possibly can while addressing the transportation issue.
Yeah, because the school district might be interested in, and I, I don't know how, how they work this. I mean, the golf course is now in the city, in my understanding, Oregon City Golf Course, and I'm excited for her that that opportunity finally arrived. But the school district being right across from that, and the community college being right across from that, we definitely, it will definitely have an impact on the folks down the road. We need to talk about that. I think it's a positive impact in a lot of ways.
Well, they're anticipating five thousand people, jobs, some, some worker, worker housing, manufacturing, that sort of thing, and tying in some of that with the efforts that the community college is making to prepare people for the modern-day workforce, so.
So, what's the timeline on it?
It could be years out. The zoning is, is basically in place. The meeting was about getting folks' input into what they would like to see there, but also input into what they perceive to be the impacts. I think that Oregon City staff clearly heard the city, the community of Beaver Creek's concern about the impacts, which is why I brought it up here today. I think that's probably the, that's probably the single most important issue. I think they recognize that it's not as if this development's going to be stopped, and I did try to encourage people to focus on, on, focus their energy on working with Oregon City to deal with the impacts, rather than waste energy on something that's probably a foregone conclusion to occur. I think that message was fairly well-received. So, it's what always happens when you have a city and, you know, right on the edge of a rural area, and development begins to occur, and, you know, people's, people's lifestyles are impacted. And so, I understand how they feel. I've been in that boat myself.
The reason I asked about the timeline is because of the housing bond. Is there an opportunity to partner? The, the issue there, however, is that we already have two sites in Clackamas County, in Oregon City, and so, you know, we have to spread that out, so. But there might be an opportunity to do something there.
With one, with somebody who wants to do the developing.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. Thank you. Have a great weekend.